We're to call a meeting to order and stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Pierce.
President.
Trustee Mason.
Here.
Trustee Peterson, here.
Trustee Dominia, here.
Trustee Paulus is absent, Trustee Johnson is absent, Mayor Hanson.
Here. I need a motion to approve the April 12th, 2021 meeting minutes.
So.
Moved by trustee Mason, second by trustee Dominia. Any questions? Trustee Pierce.
No questions, Your Honor.
Uh, quest- trustee Mason?
No questions, Your Honor.
Trustee Peterson?
No questions.
And trustee Dominia. Uh, roll call, please.
Pierce?
Aye.
Mason?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yeah.
Dominia?
Okay, four voting yes to our absence, this motion's carried. I got a couple of things we'd like to say before we turn over the paranks tonight, so if you bear with us for any long, I'd like to say a few words while we turn over to gavel.
I'll talk short. I don't often talk in these meetings, at least not at much length, unless I'm upset enough to bore people half to death, but I'll try not to do that tonight. For 12 years, Larry and I have had the opportunity to sit up here together, side by side, hopefully provide some meaningful guidance to this village as we move through a whole lot of changes. When we moved in and took these seats, you know, Newman Homes was a disaster. There were raccoons living in empty houses. Purples weren't built, streets weren't built, water lines weren't built. The village had a severe financial problem. And we had to, because of the ongoing recession that had finally hit in town. It was a terrible period of time, terrible plot of challenges. But some of those somehow, somewhere, we found it within ourselves to pull together and to build on the strength of the citizens of the village of Antioch. That really means something. I lived here for many years, right down on Victoria Street, a few blocks away from here. Raised my son here, spent a lot of time, made a lot of friends. And the continuation of those friendships throughout the period of time when Larry and I were working as hard as we were to try to sort of bring things back from the edge of disaster. You know, that really meant something to me. It meant something, I think, to everyone, because we had a lot, we were able to build that into success. And the success that we built was the resurrection of Clublands of New Haven, or Deer Crest, if you prefer to call it that. The building of things like Springer Park, Mary's Park, the, uh, even the tot lots down at Newman in Clublands, the new swimming pool. Larry's got a ho- his whole list of stuff that he can tell you about. But I can tell you this, that when we started here, the finances were wrecking right now. You're in an enviable position. And it's something you really need to take stock of and think about as you move forward into the future. If all of the villages and cities in Antioch or in the state of Illinois were run as well as this operation here is, Illinois would be a place people would be moving to, not moving from. We're leaving it in a position where there are, uh, there's a rainy day fund. You have balanced budgets for 12 years in a row. You got economic initiatives, moving people forward, helping businesses, achieving a lot of things that look forward to the future, building on the things that we have built. What we have done, a lot of it you can't see. Things like the Pittman property look like, well, it looks like that, to be polite about it. But it's a foundational piece. It's the kind of thing that you can build a park, you can build a, you know, some kind of a center. You can build, open up that stream and have a really seriously good attraction in town. And I suggest you think about what the future's gonna be for yourselves, but not so much for yourselves. Because when we achieve things, we look to the future and we look to our children and our children's children. I remember being brought to town for the first time in 1960. 1960. My dad took me over to Thompson's Restaurant, gave me a handful of nickels and told me down, told me to go downstairs and play with the slot machine, which was illegal at the time, of course, and especially for a five-year-old, six-year-old boy. But it was an awful lot of fun. And that was the thing I first noticed about Antioch, was it's a great place, it's a lot of fun and a lot of people that I learned to really like and appreciate. It's a reason I built my home here and made this my hometown for a long time. And I had the pleasure to serve under another mayor, Mayor Maravellis, for a few years. But these last four years have been really meaningful to me. And I hope that we have been able to achieve something for the citizens of Antioch, because it's you folks that we serve. I did want to say just a few thanks to Mike Garrigan, Jim Kine, Lori Romine, Joy McCarthy, wherever she might be, if she's here tonight, Jeff Gutsho, Police Department, John Cope Fair and the Fire Department, and John Nixon before them. These folks be, were more than just colleagues and coworkers. They were people I could sit down, have a cup of coffee with, talk to, share a laugh, and mostly come up with ideas for what we could do for the future and how we could make this a better place. We put a lot of those ideas into action. And frankly, your kids are gonna benefit from a lot of the things that we've done. So on that high note, I am glad to say that at this point, you've now achieved something that I wasn't sure I was ready for. You helped me make the first step toward my retirement. So in about four years, I'm cashing it in, but for now, I'm gonna take a little more time off. And I'm comfortable doing that, handing it over to my friend Jimmy Vasselli, his partner Austin there. And, you know, I know they're gonna do well. I'm gonna help them as they need help. I'm not gonna interfere, but I will help you. You know, we'll sit down, I'll share lots of stories, lots of files, lots of things about quirks, about the way Antioch really works and the way that things can happen when you all work together and try to make a place as good as it can be. You've achieved that, and I'm proud of you all, and I thank you all for the many years you've allowed me to work with the village board and with the village staff to try to make this a better place.
I'm gonna top that.
I've been working on that one for a while, Larry.
First, first and foremost, uh, I just want to thank everybody for coming out tonight to welcome the new board members that'll be seated here shortly. Um, I want to share with you residents, friends, family, members, neighbors in our Antioch community my heartfelt gratitude. It has been an honor to serve as the steward of our village in public service for nearly three decades and 12 years as your mayor. Together, we have grown and prospered. We have overcome challenges, a budget deficit, a pandemic, two worries of civil unrest in nearby Wisconsin. Like the campaign we created, we find ourselves truly better together. We are a community rooted in values, strong work ethics, and helping one another. We collectively took a bright future, looked to a bright future for a high quality of life, a spirit and an attitude I have held as mayor every day. My family, I'm one of seven. I'm thankful my mother and father are still alive. My dad, 93, my mom, 88. Spent most of their lives here. I spent my entire life here and, uh, and like them, the pride of calling our village of Antioch home. I am also proud and forever a sequoia and of most proud of leading our village, being your voice. Thank you for that opportunity. Although decades, my service and tenure sometimes doesn't feel that way, serving and being a champion for Antioch has always been a natural extension of myself. The time, the years, really did go quick. I'm reminded when my friends and colleagues point out that I was the youngest Chamber of Commerce president back in the early eighties. Over the years, through campaigns and terms, I have been blessed with hardworking staff that have shared and fostered the commitment to success for our village. I would like to take a moment to recognize those who helped guide and shape our village. Jim Kine, who's been with me since 2009. Lori Romine, being at my right side here for those 12 years. Couldn't ask for a more qualified and probably one of the best financed people in the county, Joy McCarthy, Michael Garrigan, Dennis Heingro, has done a great job with us in Public Works. Mary Quilty, uh, just had a short stint with her, uh, taking over the parks area. Newly appointed chief, Jeff Gutsho, done a fantastic job since he's taken over that position. And to all the police, fire, first responders, and to the many village employees that I have had, have worked with and grown to know, it has been an honor. In my role as mayor, setting the tone for the working of our village, its leadership and responsibilities for the well-being of our residents, along with the oversight of our Board of Trustees, I am pleased to have helped advance key projects and initiatives, including cutting over $7 million in village spending, continued fiscal strength and high ratings, creating the first ever strategic plan with the help of the board. Mary Dominia, who brought it to our attention, thank you, Mary, for that, and upgrading our comprehensive plan. Thank you, Michael Garrigan, for doing that in-house for us and saving us, uh, over a quarter million dollars. Envisioning and opening the new aquatic center, was proud of that. We've been working on that for years prior to me being mayor, and we made it happen, uh, through the, uh, through Lake County, and thank you, Linda Peterson, for allowing us and getting our hat in the ring and getting that to happen for us. Thank you very much. Completing a state-of-the-art waste treatment plant, bringing over 100 million in new development, bringing over 1 million square feet of new commercial industrial development and jobs, including fish or paper products and handy foil. And it's, has always been important to me to build strong working relationships and partnerships, both public and private. I am glad to have worked with communities and partners, including Antioch Township Supervisor Tom Shaughnessy, projects that will bring great enjoyment for residents and for the future, such as Ozzy Park, the Better Together Initiative, and future programs for our area seniors community. I also look forward to projects that's beginning to take shape, brought together under my guidance for the Antioch Downtown Beautification Project and future economic development. As we come to this fork in the road and a passing of the gavel, I like to welcome and congratulate our new village attorney, uh, village mayor, Scott Gartner, and our newest Board of Trustee members, Brett Bluthart and Katrina Berman. I know those streets conclavately, working with the trustees that have many years of service. I think they'll, uh, be a great future for the village of Antioch with their leadership. I would also like to thank trustee Jerry Johnson and Ted Pauls, who aren't with us tonight. You know, Ted, uh, going to school with Ted and his family. Ted had a great work ethic as far as, uh, the finances. We were, we're gonna miss that. And Ted, Jerry, just having a good business background, will miss that. Both great additions to this board, and I wish them all the luck in their future endeavors. And wish them all, moving forward. I would also like to express my thanks for this time given and hard work shared with trustees, Ed Mason, Mary Dominia, Scott Pierce, and Mary Peterson, and village attorney Bob Long. And a little special thank you to trustee Mason for your diligence and stick-to-it attitude on the, uh, to ensure our police department got our body cams and our village will be protected with these new security cameras under our watch. I am excited for what is ahead for our village and for what the new leadership envisions. I'm confident that they will work together and continue to a strong, for a strong and vibrant community. I look forward to continuing my passion, serving the public in the best ways possible and will keep you posted on my endeavors. Again, thank you all, especially the residents who have not only, that I not only served for 26 years, but who have become my friends, my congratulations and well wishes. And I wish the new board all future luck and successes. That being said, I will adjourn this Sunday and turn over.
Sunday DA.
Sunday DA. And I will gracefully walk out and welcome.
Call the meeting to order. Please stand for the Fledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we're gonna do the installation of new elected officials, starting with Mayor Gartner.
My name is Assistant Judge Stephen DeRoue. I'd like to thank everyone for being here today and having the opportunity to be able to participate in this installation ceremony of Mayor-elect Gartner, and also all the new members of the village Board of Trustees. This is something extra special to me, in that Antioch is my home and my community, which I care greatly about. Scott has been a longtime friend, and I've gotten to know, know quite a bit over the years through community involvement, both us being involved in the Antioch Rotary Club together. I would be remiss if I also did not acknowledge the service of Mayor Hanson, who I also consider a friend of mine, who I'm also involved with the Rotary Club, um, with, and would like to thank him for his devotion to this community and many years of community service. Mayor-elect Gartner, be prepared to proceed. Thank you all. Raise your right hand, repeat after me. I, Scott J. Gartner.
I, Scott J. Gartner.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I'll support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of mayor of the village of Antioch.
Of the office of mayor of the village of Antioch.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I am honored to be the first person to introduce the new mayor of Antioch, Scott Gartner. Think individually, we're gonna have the trustees.
Yes, trustee Pierce.
Raise your right hand, repeat after me. I, Scott Pierce.
I, Scott Pierce.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
The Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
Faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of trustee of the village of Antioch.
The office of trustee of the village of Antioch.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Trustee Bluthart.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Brett Bluthart.
I, Brett Bluthart.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
Faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of trustee of the village of Antioch.
The office of trustee of the village of Antioch.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Trustee Berman.
You could raise your right hand, repeat after me. I, Katrina Berman.
I.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the state of Illinois. And faithfully discharge the duties. Of the office of trustee of the village of Antioch. According to the best of my ability. So help me God. Congratulations. Thank you.
Hey, now, 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 clerk, will you take roll call, please?
Trustee Pierce.
President.
Trustee Mason.
Here.
Trustee Peterson, here. Trustee Bluthart.
Here.
Trustee Berman.
Here.
Trustee Dominia.
Here.
Mayor Gartner.
Here. Um, I'd like at this time to call up Administrator Jim Kine to, uh, recognize, um, outgoing elected official.
Please come up. Once a mayor, always a mayor. Good evening. On behalf of past and present members of the village board and village staff, we present a plaque of achievement, achievement to Mayor Lawrence Hanson for his 26 years of service, including 12 years as mayor of the Antioch community. We faced many challenges over the years. You should be very proud of all the positive outcomes that have been realized in addition to the numerous community improvements that have been achieved under your leadership. I'm personally grateful to you for giving me the opportunity to serve as a village administrator in the community that I grew up in and love. We wish you all the very best in your future endeavors. I hope that you continue to serve as one of Antioch's most cherished ambassadors. Good luck to you, Mayor.
And we present this plaque to you, says Lawrence M. Hanson, in recognition of 26 years of dedicated service, 14 years as village of Antioch trustee, 12 years as village of Antioch mayor, 26 total years in service as an elected representative of the village of Antioch. Thank you for all your hard work and dedication throughout the years, and have your good.
I wasn't expecting this, but thank you very much, Jim, and I didn't say it up there, but never would have been done. Well, you guys, remember that. You didn't need these guys. You need everyone and trustees, because it's not gonna do it yourself. And I wish all the luck in the world, Scott.
And, um, for, before we move on, I also would like to personally thank Mayor Hanson for 26 years of service. It's a lot of, uh, time and dedication and commitment to give to a position and to a village. I feel grateful that, um, him and his administration, trustees and staff have left the village in such a good, uh, position for me to step into those, those shoes and to take it to the next, um, phase of the village. I also would like to, uh, thank trustee Poulos and trustee, um, Johnson. Neither of them could be here tonight, um, for personal reasons, so, um, I don't want anyone on Facebook to say they didn't show up to the meeting tonight because they had other obligations, but I want to thank them for their many years of service to the, uh, community as elected officials as well. So, um, that being said, um, I'm going to, in a moment, move the, um, public comment portion, um, up on the agenda to be next. There is cake and cupcakes and coffee, if you want to stick around. If you don't feel like sitting through the business portion of the meeting, um, I will not take offense if you want to get up and go at this time. All right. So, um, man and clerk, how do we get the spokesperson from, is there somebody on Zoom that want to make comments or question?
Yeah, our IT manager, Amy Pachado, will, um, give those attending via Zoom instructions on how to speak. I only know one at the time.
Do we, do we, how many, how many public comments do we have?
We have 29 attendees right now.
How many wishing to speak? Just one?
We do not know yet. I have to give them directions. If you wish to join from a telephone, you can press star nine to raise your hand. On an Android or iOS device, tap more than raise your hand. On the computer, click raise hand in the Zoom controls. We will then call upon you one at a time to make your public comment.
Okay.
At this time, there's nobody raising their hand.
Okay, okay. If that changes, um, just let me know, but, um, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda. Next items on the agenda are, um, part of the consent, consent agenda. There's four items. Oh, yeah, okay. All right, first, first, first staff who? First off, we're going to appoint, um, the village attorney and village prosecutors who are here today. We have a resolution to appoint Delgado Law Group as village attorney. Um, I need a motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Not for me, Your Honor. Trustee Mason?
If you'd be on the same case scale?
Of the prior?
Prior, yeah.
Um, actually, it is $4,500 less than prior.
No questions.
Trustee Peterson?
No questions, Jim.
Trustee Bluthart? No question. Trustee Berman?
No question.
Trustee Dominia?
No question.
All right. Take roll call.
Pierce?
I.
Mason?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yeah.
Bluthart?
Yeah.
Berman?
Yeah.
Dominia?
Yes.
All right. Six voting yes, none opposed, motion carried. So, reduce, Attorney James Basili, who is part of Delgado Law Group, he will be the village attorney. Thank you. Thank you. All right, next item on the agenda is a motion to appoint Matthew DiMartini as the prosecuting attorney for the Village of Antioch. Can I have a motion?
No motion.
Second.
Any discussion?
Which item are we working on here?
Sorry, yeah, on the appointment of Matt.
Matt DiMartini.
All right, just want to make sure we're clear.
Yep.
No other questions.
Okay, trustee Mason?
Great gun.
Trustee Peterson?
No questions, Your Honor.
Trustee Bluthard?
No questions, ma'am.
Trustee Berman?
No question.
Trustee Domeniac?
No question, Your Honor.
Okay.
Can I just clarify who made that motion, trustee Mason, was that you?
Yes, that was me.
Pierce?
Hi.
Mason?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yeah.
Bluthard?
Yeah.
Berman?
Yes.
Domeniac?
Yes.
Okay, six, four, zero against motion carries. I will now go for the approval of a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a retainer agreement with Delgado Law Group, resolution number 21-23. I need a motion in a second. Motion.
Second.
Discussion, trustee Pierce?
No questions, Your Honor.
Trustee Mason?
No question.
Trustee Peterson?
No question, Your Honor.
Trustee Bluthard?
No question, Your Honor.
Trustee Berman?
No question.
Trustee, trustee Domeniac?
No question.
Roll call.
Pierce?
Hi.
Mason?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Bluthard?
Yeah.
Berman?
Yeah.
Domeniac?
Yes.
All right, six voting yes, zero voting no, motion carries. The next item on the agenda is the approval of a, approval of a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a retainer agreement with DiMartini Law Offices, resolution 21-24. I need a motion in a second.
Second.
Discussion, trustee Pierce?
No questions, Your Honor.
Trustee Mason?
No question.
Trustee Peterson?
No question, Your Honor.
Trustee Bluthard?
No question, Your Honor.
Trustee Berman?
No question.
Trustee Domeniac?
No question, Your Honor.
Man and clerk, please take vote.
Pierce?
Hi.
Yes.
Mason?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Bluthard?
Yeah.
Berman?
Yes.
Domeniac?
Yes.
All right, six voting yes, zero voting no, motion carries. The next item on the agenda is the committee liaison assignments. So I will read these aloud. Some of them have stayed the same from before, so we have trustee Domeniac is going to be a liaison for economic development, including business creation and retention, incentives, tourism and related matters, planning and zoning and building, including village zoning, code enforcement permits and building inspections. Trustee Berman is going to be the liaison for the parks, the Parks Department, including special events, EPA and school board liaison. Trustee Bluthard is going to be the liaison for IT, municipal associations, legislative, state lobbying and county boards. Trustee Mason is going to be the liaison for the public works, utilities, the stormwater management and SWALCO. Trustee Pierce will be the liaison for public safety, including police, fire and emergency management. And trustee Peterson will be the liaison for finance, including utility and water, human resource, senior services and community service and relations. All right, moving on.
Your Honor? I've got a quick question, I'm sorry. Trustee Bluthard's position, where it says municipal associations, does that include HOA? Is that part of that inclusion?
Yeah, yes, okay. Yes, that's part of that. Um, so instead of going through and reading different proclamations and everything, I'm just going to go through and make some acknowledgements of different weeks or different groups that were seeking acknowledgement. So this is Mental Health Awareness Month. We are acknowledging that it is also motorcycle awareness month. It is Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. It is Police Week. It's Fulan Dafa Week, May 10th through the 16th. It's National Public Works Week, May 16th to the 22nd. It's Municipal Clerks Week, or was Municipal Clerks Week, May 2nd through the 8th. And it is International Nurses Day on May 12th. So make those, those acknowledgements today. Now we get to the consent agenda, right? Okay, so I'm going to ask the board, is there anything that needs to be pulled off the consent agenda? Are we okay to move forward? All right. So the first one on the consent agenda is the approval of Corporate Authorities Resolution for Heartland Bank and Trust and State Bank of the Lakes. The second item is approval of a resolution granting a request to dedicate a park bench to Robert Bobby Lancaster, which is resolution 21-27. The third item is acceptance of the annual treasurer's sworn statement of the Antioch Police Pension Fund for fiscal year ending April 30th, 2021. And the last item is approval of a resolution authorizing a special event liquor license for the Antioch Moose Lodge for its Thursday night concert series, waiving all fees, resolution 21-28. I get a motion in a second. I'll second. My discussion, trustee Pierce?
No discussion, Your Honor.
Trustee Mason?
No discussion, thank you.
Trustee Peterson?
No discussion, Your Honor.
Trustee Bluthard?
No discussion.
Trustee Berman?
No discussion.
Trustee Domeniac?
No discussion.
Okay, please take roll.
Pierce?
Hi.
Mason?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yeah.
Bluthard?
Yeah.
Berman?
Yeah.
Domeniac?
Yes.
Six voting yes, zero voting no, motion carries. Now on to regular business. The first item on the regular agenda is a consideration to ratify the April 30th, 2021, payment of accounts payable as prepared by staff. I need a motion in a second.
So move.
Second.
Discussion, trustee Pierce?
What's the amount on that for the record, please?
Two fifty, $252,255.27.
Thank you, trustee Mason.
I believe it's two six one six three zero.
Right.
Two hundred and sixty thousand, two hundred and sixty one thousand, six hundred and thirty dollars.
What am I reading?
Going to ratify April 30th, right? Is that the one we're on?
Yeah, correct. All right. Do you have the correct number?
Two sixty one, I'm sorry, I read the top one. My apologies. Two sixty one, thirty, twenty seven cents.
All right, any discussion, trustee Peterson?
No discussion.
Trustee Bluthard?
No discussion.
Trustee Berman?
No discussion.
Trustee Domeniac?
No question, Your Honor.
All right, clerk, please take roll.
Pierce?
Hi.
Mason?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Bluthard?
Yeah.
Berman?
Yeah.
Domeniac?
Yeah.
Six yes, zero voting no, motion carries. Next item on the regular business agenda is a consideration of payments for accounts payable as prepared by staff. I need a motion in a second.
Move to approve accounts payable in the amount of $347,258.58.
Second.
Any discussion, trustee Pierce?
No questions, Your Honor.
Trustee Mason?
No questions.
Trustee Peterson?
No question, Your Honor.
Trustee Bluthard?
No questions, ma'am.
Trustee Berman?
No question.
Trustee Domeniac?
No question, Your Honor.
Hey, clerk, please take roll.
Pierce?
Hi.
Mason?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Bluthard?
Yeah.
Berman?
Yeah.
Domeniac?
Yeah.
Six voting yes, zero voting no, motion carries. Number seven on the regular business agenda is the consideration of an emergency ordinance ratifying the mayoral declaration of an emergency relating to coronavirus, ordinance number 21-05-12. I need a motion in a second. Don't move.
Second.
That way we can wait for reading.
Let's wait for the second reading, Brett.
Brett, do you want to wave the second reading?
Yes. Trustee Pierce?
No questions, Your Honor.
Trustee Mason?
No questions.
Trustee Peterson?
No question, Your Honor.
Trustee Bluthard?
No question, Your Honor.
Trustee Berman?
No question.
Trustee Domeniac?
No question, Your Honor.
Clerk, please take roll.
Pierce?
Hi.
Mason?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yeah.
Bluthard?
Yeah.
Berman?
Yeah.
Domeniac?
Yeah.
Six voting yes, zero voting no, motion carries. Last item on the regular business agenda, consideration of a resolution approving an amended facade grant for Vegas restaurants in the amount of $35,750.00. Resolution 21-29, I need a motion in a second.
Don't move. Second.
All right, discussion, trustee Pierce?
Can we get Mr. Garrigan to kind of explain why we're having a $15,000 jump in this? Sure. I mean, it's a valid reason, but I think we should have it on the record.
Yes, thank you. The reason, the basis for that mandate, the basis for the amended request is, you know, after the start renovation several weeks ago, they removed the second floor stucco based on their discovery, the historic windows actually are largely intact, but they do need their duplicate or fabricating new windows. So based on that fact, they are coming for this board tonight, asking for approximately $15,500 in addition to the $20,250 approved. So what is being proposed, consistent with our design standards, is the restoration of the historic windows. So the original facade grant did not incorporate the restoration of the original windows, which were a part and parcel of the buildings, we go back to that 05 and 1910. So that's the basis for the request modification.
Thank you, Mr. Garrigan.
Anything else?
No, Your Honor.
Trustee Mason?
So Mike, we've got X amount of funds in that facade money. Correct?
Correct.
So one business is taking more out from the other businesses, correct?
As we now, as we're bringing our new budget for this year, is bringing certain defined funds from the federal business district. We have set aside a defined amount. Obviously, this will be the first new application or request for this fiscal year. So simply answer your question, this would not impact any other facade grant that's been approved. So if that's actually been approved, obviously, prospective applicants have the priority to come before this board in the future. I don't know who those applications, applications will be. So answer your question correctly, no, this would not have any impact on future applications. We incorporate a defined amount of money.
What happens if someone wants the T, T restaurant, they want money? I'm just wondering, I'm just hoping we don't run out of money before the projects come in, because we're given more money than usual.
Well, we track funds, we track available funds, and obviously, when the funds have been fully expended, then obviously, the future requests would be kick over to the next fiscal year for a pass number of years, and we actually not completely spent, expended all the basically approved funds in the facade program. So as of right now, we've not had that problem. As we encourage more facades, perhaps it will be a problem in the future.
We were under budget last year, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Trustee Peter?
I have no comments, Your Honor.
Trustee Bluthard?
My only comment is I look forward to seeing the completed building. It is all very nice.
Trustee Berman?
No comment.
Trustee Domeniac?
I think this is a program that I can support because it's a very important business on Main Street.
Anyone else? Otherwise, clerk, take roll.
Pierce?
Hi.
Mason?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Bluthard?
Yeah.
Berman?
Yeah.
Domeniac?
Yes.
Six voting yes, zero voting no, motion carries. Next on the agenda, administrator's report, Jim, do you have anything? No report tonight, Your Honor. Village clerk, anything to report?
I have no report.
Trustees, start down with trustee Pierce, do you have anything to report?
I have nothing to report, Your Honor, but I would like to take a moment to say thank you to all the voters who chose to vote for me this election. I hope that I will make your vote a worthy vote by my performance and actions. So thank you all very much. I do need to take a moment to say, I know Larry Hanson gets blamed for a lot of things, but I will tell you, 20 years ago, he came up to me and said, Scott, the village board needs somebody, would you like to be on it? So I will blame him for me. And seriously, I know that trustee Polis, trustee Johnson and Mayor Hanson have done a lot for this village that was good. And I want to raise my hand to them and a toast and tell them, thank you for doing such a good job. Other than that, I wish this whole board well.
Trustee Mason? Anything to report?
No comments. It was a pleasure working with Larry. You know, it was a pleasure working with Assam, I was in the police commission, you know. The one thing I'll say to the audience is, you know, when you serve, it's a sacrifice to your family. And give, give, you know, on Facebook, give the people a break. It's, it's not, it's not as easy a job as people think, so, you know, God bless everybody up here.
Trustee Peterson?
I'd just like to say congratulations to you, and I look forward to working with you and our new trustees. Congratulations, and I'm very hopeful for the future. Thank you.
Trustee Bluthard?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, on behalf of my family, thank you, those that reached